Hello, I'm Hank Black, District 9. I sound like a Yankee, but I've been here 40 years. I'm a Dallasite. I'm talking about fluoride again. I'm a little bit concerned that the things that I brought haven't been properly viewed. You've been presented with a sea of information, and I've been studying this pretty hard for a year now, and spent a lot of time on it, and selected very carefully things for brevity and relevance to the issue at hand. We have to decide whether we're going to renew the contract for hydrofluoric acid. Certain factors rise as incontrovertible, and these are getting lost in a sea of so much information. I would like to offer myself to talk to any of you now, later, one at a time, all the time, formally, informally, to make sure that you see the question. There's things that we have to sort out here. This is important. Is it something I'm trying to take away from you, like mother's milk, a nutrient? Is it a toxic waste? Is it both? Am I your friend? Am I your enemy? I'm your friend if you are sincere in putting safety above politics. Now, it's true that you should be conservative on this, but conservative in a political sense is quite different than conservative in a safety sense. First, do no harm. That's the principle. First, do no harm. And there's this clever slogan we have, "When in doubt, keep it out." Well, that's not just a clever slogan, that's the law. For some reason, it's been turned around as if we have to prove that it's dangerous. Actually, the law says they have to prove it's safe. Why does the FDA -- they are qualified. Actually, this whole thing can be reduced down to a simple thing. Why does the FDA have on the toothpaste label, "It's a drug"? Drug content, fluoride. And yet, they don't do the test, and they won't endorse it. This is an unapproved drug. You're putting in something that the FDA has not approved. Once again, I really would love to speak to you more about this. I can't do it in three minutes. But there's only four or five things that rise as absolutely need to be understood before you can vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is William Nguyen. I live at 5045 Forest Lane Circle, Dallas, Texas, 75244. That's in Jennifer Gates's district, District 13. I'm here today to express my opposition to fluoridation, and I'm going to play a short video for you today that's currently being aired in the Dallas-Fort Worth area as a public service announcement. This PSA stars the noted actor and environmentalist Ed Begley Jr. It's noteworthy that this video was shown in December during the time slot of the Dr. Oz Show in the afternoon, five times. Currently, it's being aired by Fox 4 several times during the month of January. So without a whole lot of additional comments, I'm going to go ahead, play you the video. Hope you enjoy it and find it informative. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed Begley Jr. You know, back in the '50s, doctors on television told us cigarettes were cool, fun, and harmless. They also told us adding fluoride to our water is good for our teeth. But did you know 41% of American children now have dental fluorosis? You want your children's teeth to look like this? You think that's bad? How about your child's brain? Well, scientists at Harvard University published that fluoride prevents proper brain development and lowers IQ. So if people have to wear hazmat suits to handle this stuff because it's so corrosive and eats through concrete, and you're warned to call poison control if you swallow your toothpaste, then why is it still added to the water we drink, cook, and shower with? The good news is countries like Israel and cities like Portland, Wichita, Davis, California have rejected fluoridation, and we can too. So here's what you want to do. First, get all the facts at fluoridealert.org. Second, go to fluoridprotection.org for everything you need to protect your family from fluoride. Then, work with your city's fluoride awareness group to get this poison out of your community's water.
That's all I have to say for you today. There'll be many more speakers addressing fluoridation that follow me. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. Thank you.
Your next speaker, Raylene Stewart. Ms. Stewart will be followed by Lakoya London, Jerry Hodges, Stuart Nelson, Marjorie Stakely, Joe Stokes, Regina Amburgia, John Greer, Phyllis Greer.
Hi, my name is Raylene Stewart. I live at 16,000 Bent Tree Forest Circle, Dallas, Texas. I would like to read a short statement from Dr. Jim Maxey DDS out of Oklahoma. Dr. Maxey has written letters to each of you, and he has offered to answer any questions you may have. You have also been given a newspaper article previously that he wrote. He has made the personal commitment to give up his dental license if anyone can actually prove that fluoridation is safe and effective for everyone. Dr. Jim Maxey was not able to video record his message, so he sent it. Here is his statement. Communities that are ending fluoridation should consider themselves very fortunate to be eliminating this very toxic arsenic-laced industrial waste fluorosilic acid chemical from their water supply. However, I know there will be a slew of dentists and other pro-fluorid folks who will begin to rave on and on and on that tooth decay rates will now double or triple when fluoridation ends. Rest assured, that will never happen, as these misinformed dentists aren't aware that there has never been even one controlled study that scientifically documents that water fluoridation has ever reduced or prevented tooth decay. Since water fluoridation has never been shown to reduce or prevent tooth decay, how can removing it from the drinking water cause tooth decay rates to increase? H. Turnley Dean DDS was the chief dental officer of the U.S. Public Health Service and who the ADA refers to as "the father of water fluoridation." Dr. Dean was responsible for designing and creating the classical fluoridated water tooth decay studies done by the UPSHS in the early 1940s and early 1950s. Dr. Dean, when cross-examined before the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California in Oroville, October 20 to 21, 1955, admitted under oath that those studies were not valid studies. None of those studies, nor any since then, followed the same children from year to year. The water sources were not consistent, and there was absolutely no consideration for nutrition, oral hygiene, or dental care. A valid scientific-controlled study cannot have these numerous variables, especially variables that are not taken into consideration. The ADA just forgot to teach dentists that Dr. Dean invalidated his own classical studies. Ending water fluoridation will not cause any increase in tooth decay rates, as water fluoridation has never reduced or prevented tooth decay in the first place. And remember, tooth decay causes fluoridation. Please vote "no" on January 28th. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jerry Hodges, and I'm from Collyville. And I would like to speak to you today about fluoridation in the water.
Hi, I'm Griffin Cole, and I'm a dentist in Austin, Texas. I've been practicing for 22 years, and I've been studying water fluoridation for about 25. I'm going to make this real simple for you. I can tell you three huge inherent problems with water fluoridation. Number one, it's not fluoride. It's not the naturally occurring calcium fluoride, and it's not the sodium fluoride that's added to toothpaste. But rather, it's hydrofluorosilic acid, a waste product from the fertilizer industry. So toxic, in fact, that the EPA does not allow it to be dumped in the landfills or vaporized up into the air. They have to install scrubbing stacks to capture the acid. So where does it go? Well, it's filled in the tankers and driven to all different cities around the country, including Dallas, and dumped in the water supply. So again, not fluoride. Number two, it doesn't do its intended function. It's supposed to fight decay or lessen cavities. The World Health Organization has shown that it's virtually even worldwide on decay rates going down at the same pace. It doesn't matter whether it's fluoridated or not, and we're about the only country that still does this. There are many studies to show that it doesn't have any beneficial effect on the teeth whatsoever, none to show that it does. Number three, and probably most important, no dose control. There's no dose control at all. If you go to a pharmacist to get a medication filled, it is an exact dosage based on age and weight. This stuff is added to our water supply with no discrimination at all. A bottle-fed infant is going to get so much more fluoride based on its weight versus an adult. So once again, three problems, big problems, all you have to remember. Number one, it's not fluoride. Number two, it doesn't do its intended function. And number three, there's no dose control. So come on, vote with your conscience and now with knowledge. Thank you.
The EPA put out a statement, and they said, in summary, "We hold that fluoridation is an unreasonable risk." What do you think they mean by "an unreasonable risk"? They're saying, "Don't fluoridate the water." And I'd like to ask you today to please stop the fluoridation. This is a highly toxic substance that you're putting in the water supply. It's not doing anything for the health, and it's causing hazards to children, adults, animals, birds, anything that gets in contact with it. It eats concrete. I mean, how can you think that putting a substance like this in our water is going to be good for us? So I ask you, please, stop the fluoridation. Thank you.
Your next speaker, Stuart Nelson, will be followed by Marjorie Stakely.
Hi, my name is Stuart Nelson. I live at 4512 Abbott, and just a few exits north of this location. So I wanted to play a video as well. I appreciate your time, and I'm looking forward to sending this information to you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Joan Sebsig. I've been practicing dentistry for 30 years, and I'm currently the president of the International Academy of Biological Dentistry and Medicine. Fluoride does not occur naturally anywhere in the body. There are no recommended daily requirements for fluoride. It is not necessary for life. In fact, it's considered a foreign object when ingested internally, such as in the drinking water. Since it's a foreign object, it's also toxic to the body. So when you take it internally, especially if your teeth are developing, it will actually deform your teeth and cause dental fluorosis. It will damage your bones, making them more brittle, and making them more susceptible to fractures and to cancer. It harms all the organs, especially the kidneys and the brain cells. It calcifies your pineal gland. And since it's chemically similar to iodine, it will replace iodine in your thyroid hormone, making it inactive, even though your thyroid hormones may look normal on tests. It also inactivates 62 enzymatic reactions in your body. As you can see, ingesting fluoride only does harm. So I highly recommend that Dallas stop fluoridating their water and protect and enhance the health of their citizens. Thank you.
Okay, I want to, again, thank everybody for, City Council, for listening, and ask you to make a statement of unanimous vote to not fluoridate, add fluoridation to the water. Thank you.
Your next speaker, Marjorie Stakely, will be followed by Joe Stokes and Regina Amburgia.
Marjorie Stakely, District 2. This video is of Dr. Carmen, who has the terminal degree in the same area where my master's degree is in.
My name is Neil Carmen. I have a PhD in the biological sciences emphasizing biochemistry and chemistry and molecular biology. I am speaking about my concerns of adding hydrofluorosilic acid to the water supply in Dallas, and why the Dallas City Council should be very concerned. Number one, this chemical has not been subjected to a single double-blind study in the United States or worldwide. Double-blind studies are the gold standard used by the FDA and the drug industry to prove the safety and efficacy of allowing drugs to be prescribed in the United States. So this chemical has not been subjected to adequate safety testing. A second reason is because this is a highly toxic form of industrial fluoride that's completely different from the naturally occurring calcium fluoride in the water supply naturally. But calcium in the calcium fluoride is a buffering agent, which is completely lacking in the hydrofluorosilic acid. Another reason is that the hydrofluorosilic acid has an industrial waste product, is highly impure, and it is contaminated with toxic metals such as arsenic, hexavalachromium, lead, mercury, and other toxic substances. Arsenic and hexavalachromium are both known human cancer-causing agents, and there's no intelligent idea behind adding these kinds of cancer-causing chemicals into the drinking water. Lead and mercury are both well-known neurological toxins, and they are very harmful to children. And so there's no good reason to add mercury and lead to the drinking water as well. I would point out that hydrofluorosilic acid has an industrial form of fluoride, is more toxic than lead itself. We know lead is a very dangerous substance, but so is the hydrofluorosilic acid that's being put into the water supply, even in low concentrations. This is not a good idea to be exposing children and others to this form of toxic fluoride. And so I would encourage the Dallas City Council to end this harmful practice.
The way I've been personally affected by this is I am a hypothyroid, as I've been for several years. My sleep has been badly disrupted to the point where I'm not able to keep a regular schedule and have a job. And so I've been drawing disability since 2012, and I would appreciate not renewing the contract. Thank you.
Your next speaker, Joe Stokes. Mr. Stokes will be followed by Regina Amburgia, John Greer, Phyllis Greer, John Parks, David Glass, David Seibert, and David Hevley.
My name is Joe Stokes, 8930 San Benito Way in Dallas. Everybody's given two summaries from the Harvard study that I will cite. I'm 30 years in the public schools, and I consider myself a protector and defender of our children. As elected servants of your brothers and sisters, your children, our children, you are entrusted to make informed decisions on their behalf. This is from Abraham Lincoln. "I do not think much of a man who is not wiser today than he was yesterday. Never choose the easy path; choose the one that has morals. Be honest, follow your heart, and do the right thing. God sees and knows all." Those people who develop the ability to continuously acquire new and better forms of knowledge that they can apply to their work and to their lives will be the movers and shakers in our society for the indefinite future. By Brian Tracy. "Impact of fluoride on neurological development in children," and this is from the Harvard Studies from 2012. "For years, health experts have been unable to agree on whether fluoride in the drinking water may be toxic to the developing human brain. Extremely high levels of fluoride are known to cause neurotoxicity in adults, and negative impacts on memory and learning, and have been reported in rodent studies. But little is known about the substance's impact on children's neurodevelopment. In a meta-analysis, researchers from Harvard School of Public Health and China Medical University in Shenyang, for the first time, combined 27 studies and found strong indications that fluoride may adversely affect cognitive development in children. Based on the findings, the author says that this risk should not be ignored, and that more research on fluoride's impact on the developing brain is warranted." The study was published online in Environmental Health Perspectives in July of 2012. "The average loss in IQ is reported as standardized weighted mean difference of 0.45, which would be approximately equivalent to seven IQ points for commonly-used IQ scores with a standard deviation of 15 points. Some studies suggest that even slightly increased fluoride exposure could be toxic to the brain. Thus, children in high-fluorid areas had significantly lower IQ scores than those who lived in low-fluorid areas. The children's study were up to 14 years old, but the investigators speculate that any toxic effect on brain development may have happened earlier, and that the brain may not be fully capable of compensating for the toxicity. Fluoride seems to fit in with lead, mercury," this is all from the studies, the Harvard Studies, and that you have and that you're supposed to read. "Fluoride seems to fit in with lead, mercury, and other poisons that can cause chemical brain drain," Grandjean, one of the authors says. "The effect of each toxin may seem small, but the combined damage on a population scale can be serious, especially because the brain power of the next generation is crucial to us all. Do the right thing, and the nation will follow your lead."
Thank you.
Your next speaker, Regina Amburgia.
I'm Regina Amburgia. I'm in District 14. You've heard me speak many times before, but today I'm bringing a letter from a dentist. Okay? So let me introduce myself. I'm Dr. Daniel Strater, third-generation Dallas dentist. I have practiced dentistry in Dallas for 38 years. I'm a member of the American Dental Association and the recipient of the Texas Dental Association's Honorary Order of Good Fellow. There is natural fluoride already in the Dallas water. The city of Dallas has been adding additional fluoride to the water supply, believing it will help growing kids avoid cavities. Highland Park and University Park's municipal water facilities have never added fluoride to the water supply. I can tell you, from practicing dentistry on the border between Dallas and Park Cities, I have not seen any advantage of the fluoride added to the Dallas children. In fact, here are just some of the problems caused by the fluoridation of water. Number one, fluoridated water causes fluorosis, he has in parentheses, white and brown spots in 40% of the Dallas children. The more water they drink, the more fluorosis they get. Number two, fluoridated water makes teeth brittle, hard, causing more tooth breakage. Number three, fluoridated water causes bones to become brittle. Number four, fluoridated water gives no benefit to adults whose teeth have already formed. Number five, fluoride competes with iodine in the thyroid, causing various thyroid-associated health problems, including links to cancer. Number six, fluoridation lowers the IQ of children, according to the Harvard study. Fluoride is added to the water supply as a drug to cause perceived beneficial changes in the person who drinks the water, but there is no control of the dosage received. Many adults, including myself, have high blood pressure. What if my prescription blood pressure drug was added to the water supply? What dose would I get? I would depend on how much water I drank. Some people who have low blood pressure would be harmed by the drug; others would overdose. Please don't practice medicine without a license by placing drugs in our water supply. Please vote to stop adding fluoride to the Dallas municipal water supply. Respectfully, Daniel Strater DDS." Now, this guy is right near you guys. You can talk to him. I know, okay, I wrote something else, too, that I was going to say. You guys have all been elected to do this vote, so you have the ability to do the vote. But do you have the knowledge to do the vote? And I see you people paying attention, kind of not paying it. This is a big vote. Do you really feel qualified? You are going to be required to make that decision, and you have been voted, you have the ability to do it. But do you really have the knowledge to do it? I mean, I like lots of you. I mean, I don't know you, but I feel like I kind of know you, and I feel like I want to believe you want to do the right thing. And I want to end by 3 o'clock, because, 3 minutes, because I told everybody, we don't want to have Mayor Rawlings say, "Thank you, thank you." So, but thank you. And here are the rest of them. Thank you for today. Okay, bye.
Your next speaker.
Thank you.
John Greer, Phyllis Greer, John Parks, David Glass will follow. Please, if you have handouts, if you'll go ahead and start bringing them forward, it does affect your speaking time.
I'd like to read directly from the MSDS for hydrofluoric acid. "Harmful if swallowed. Contact with water may generate toxic, irritating, and corrosive gases. Ingestion, if swallowed, call physician immediately. Note to physician, all types of contact should be treated immediately. Avoid direct discharge to sewers and surface waters. Reacts violently with water. Toxicology. Chronic exposure may entail dental or skeletal fluorosis. Disposal, dispose of in a permitted hazardous waste management facility following all local, state, and federal regulations." I would like to share with you two very important definitions. The first is a drug, defined as any substance other than food, used in the prevention, diagnosis, alleviation, treatment, or cure of a disease. The second is dental careys, defined as a disease of the teeth. Now, the state defines practicing medicine without a license as any activity that is intended to cure disease or preserve health. Anyone diagnosing, prescribing medicine, or performing physical exams engaging in the practice of medicine without a license is often a felony offense. Finally, on informed consent, the cornerstone of patients' rights. Consent means that doctors do not have the right to touch or treat a patient without that patient's approval, because the patient ultimately is the one that has to live with the consequences and the discomfort caused by the treatment. A healthcare provider must first present information on the risks, alternatives, and success rates. I would contend that if larger doses were introduced, more lethal ties to health failures would be brought to our attention. However, we are slowly poisoning the people, so slowly, that conditions are not tied directly to this toxic substance. I strongly urge you to vote against adding hydrofluorosilic acid to the water on the 28th, because drinking water to treat cavities is like drinking bleach or peroxide to whiten your teeth. I have enclosed a copy of the fluoridation brochure from the International Academy of Oral Medicine and Toxicology in your packets. Thank you so much for your time.
Your next speaker, Phyllis Greer. Ms. Greer will be followed by John Parks, David Glass, David Seibert, and David Hevley.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Greer. I live at 2705 Dogleg in McKinney, Texas. Although I don't live in Dallas, I was raised here. I was born in Dallas. I do business here, and I have a rental property in Irving, Texas, that receives water from Dallas. As part of my presentation, I would like to share two short video clips. First is my pastor, Eric Philpott.
This is to Mayor Rawlings and Council. My name is Eric Philpott. I'm the pastor of Crossline Church in Allen, Texas. And this is pertaining to the vote that's taking place later on this month with regards to fluoride in the water there in the city of Dallas. As a pastor, I want to make a request to you to go ahead and do what is the ethical and moral thing to do with regards to this decision. The city of Dallas and the people of Dallas do not know that there actually is fluoride in the water, or what the effects of fluoride is to their brains, to their minds. in the water, or what the effects of fluoride is to their brains, to their minds, and to their bodies. And so I'm asking you, because you do know that it would be the moral and the ethical thing to do, to go ahead and vote against fluoridating the water in Dallas. I pray that the decision is a good decision, that you have the ability to make. Thank you.
This second clip is a former Dallas cowboy, John Nyland. You may remember him from the Roger Staubach days, or the good old days.
This is John Nyland, and I know for a fact, chemicals like fluoride can be very dangerous to your own system. It can be very detrimental to your own particular living if you're not careful with it. And they're putting it in our water. They've been knowing it for years now, and they say it's going to be something that could cure and be somewhat of a result to get cavities taken care of, or somehow strengthen your system. It does not do that. You know, if you look at it from a chemical standpoint, number one, they're practicing medicine without a license. If they call it a chemical, as they have done it, I just can't see that we should spend another million dollars or so trying to keep it in our system, keep it in our water system. So if you don't want to have this on a continuous basis, you want to vote against it.
I would just like to strongly urge you to stop adding hydrofluoresilic acid to the water. Please vote no on January 28th. Thank you so much for your time.
John Parks. John Parks will be followed by David Glass, David Seibert, and David Heffley.
My name's John Parks. I PO Box 852632 Richardson. I want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm going to cede part of my time to Dr. Ray coming up here right now.
I'm Dr. Bill Ray from the Environmental Health Center of Dallas. I founded this clinic some 35 years ago to find the aspects or define the aspects of cardiovascular disease and other diseases that were environmentally induced. I've written eight textbooks, and I've written numerous papers, 150 scientific papers. I'm speaking on the fluoride issue, and I feel that Dallas should not put any more fluoride in the water. We have numerous patients, somewhere in the thousands, who can't drink Dallas water. One of the reasons is because of the fluoride that's in it. Several thousand patients who can't tolerate fluoride in their water, and we have tested them and proved cause and effect from this. I think that we have enough fluoride in Dallas water, and I don't think we should add any more, because it is a toxic substance. It's a brother of chlorine, and we know that chlorine is necessary for the city of water, but we don't want to add more poison to this, because it can affect similar systems in the body. We know that there is natural fluoride in Dallas water, and that should be enough to do whatever people are looking for, but we certainly don't need any more fluoride in the water, in my opinion.
So over the past few months, you've heard from concerned citizens, some of us with letters behind our name, most of us without, but all of us affected by this decision. We've brought in experts with credentials, very credible credentials. You've heard from some of them right here. We have emailed you links to additional videos, YouTube videos, and other links with additional individuals with credentials discussing why it's not just us, but large numbers of people are asking, are wanting to not have fluoride in the water. So on January 28th, we ask you to please vote no on renewing the contract for the fluoride. Thank you.